I'd like to call this, uh... I'd like to call this meeting of the City University of New York Board to, uh, to I'd like to begin by reading, uh, my usual public notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public and the Board welcomes the interests of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meeting, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. University may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cell phones or other handheld device, devices? Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public session of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel seventy-five. The meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers. The public sessions of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within twenty-four hours and can also be accessed by the CUNY website. In light of recent state budget developments, I would like to begin my report this afternoon with a statement that I hope will provide perspective on the budgetary challenges before us. The Chancellor will be adding his comments when he, when he gives his report on the budget. Seventeen years ago, I led a task force that concluded that the City University of, of New York in nineteen ninety-nine was adrift and stuck in a spiral of decline. Under a chaotic admissions system, uneven standards, lack of planning and coordination among the campuses, this venerable New York institution was suffering from painful declines in student enrollment, in faculty numbers and quality. Mayor Giuliani was, was even blunter, arguing that we should, quote, "blow up" the system because of its flaws and start all over again. I recall this bleak diagnosis of nineteen ninety-nine because of the vast distance CUNY has traveled since that time. It has not just been improved, it has been reborn. Public and political reaction to our report prompted a period of reassessment and fundamental reform that has been transformative and inspirational. The people of New York have been richly rewarded for their investments in CUNY and their patience. Today, CUNY is one of the greatest education success stories in modern higher education, which is why I think the recent uncertainty over our governance and our funding is, is puzzling and potentially very harmful. CUNY, the largest urban university system in the country, is currently at record enrollment with a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand degree students compared with fewer than two-hundred-thousand when we wrote the report in nineteen ninety-nine. More than additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand are enrolled in non-degree adult and continuing education courses. Who are our students? In addition to being among the brightest and most motivated anywhere, the great majority are from low-income, underrepresented groups, and immigrant populations. Seventy-five percent of all Pell Grant recipients in New York City are enrolled in CUNY's various colleges. Seventy percent of full-time undergraduates receive enough financial aid to fully cover their tuition. More than eight out of ten of our undergraduates graduate completely free of federal student loan debt. Access to CUNY has never been greater. As for quality, thirty-nine of our students have won prestigious Fulbrights in the last two years, and CUNY has produced more MacArthur Genius Award winners than any other public university except for Berkeley. CUNY routinely congratulates winners of honors such as Rhodes and Marshall scholarships as they match or beat competitors from Ivy League schools. CUNY has experienced nearly a seventy percent increase in students declaring STEM majors over the past decade in response to our targeted investments in science faculty and engineering faculty and facilities. Our faculty have earned and continue to bring home the most prestigious of honors, from Pulitzers, Grammy, Grammys, Nobel Prizes, to lifetime achievement awards in poetry and criminology. Ambitious planning is well underway for CUNY's next act, leading the way for twenty-first century urban universities. This is exactly the time when New Yorkers are reaping enormous educational and economic benefits from CUNY's progress, when the state of New York should be increasing its investment to lock in these substantial returns and accelerate greater future rewards. Instead, the conversation about the future of CUNY has been dominated by huge risks to our budget and rumors of governance changes. The two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen New York State Executive Budget proposed shifting four-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollars of the state's annual CUNY funding to the city while providing two-hundred-and-forty-million to help settle our outstanding labor contracts, our, our university's highest priority. The city immediately rejected assuming this budget obligation. The governor has promised that CUNY's budget will not be cut, but it is at this point unclear how funding for CUNY and much, and the much-needed investments to settle contracts for CUNY's faculty and staff will be resolved. Stabilizing CUNY's funding is critical to sustaining our university's remarkable rise and its contributions to New York's economic and cultural vitality. CUNY is obligated, as are, as are all public universities, to operate cost-effectively and focus its resources on academic programs. Chancellor Miliken initiated a university-wide cost-reduction process and is leading our efforts, together with the Trustee's Fiscal Committee, to ensure a more efficient, productive CUNY that puts most emphasis on additional full-time faculty and academic and student support services. In part because it's the nation's largest university system in one city, CUNY has been a national leader in creating shared services among its campuses in areas such as information, technology, human resources, public safety, admissions, financial and facility, financial aid, facilities management, and construction. While a comparison of costs based on audited financials demonstrates that CUNY prepares, compares very well with other large systems, we are committed to continuing to achieve greater efficiencies and investing more in student success. We look to the governor and the New York State Legislature to reaffirm the importance of an independent CUNY to the people of New York and to agree on a stable, fair budget that will enable CUNY to fulfill its historic commitment of providing the people of our city and state with access to high-quality, inexpensive education. I want to particularly acknowledge and thank the leaders of all five, of, of all twenty-five CUNY college foundations for their open letter to Governor Andrew Cuomo and members of the New York State Senate and Assembly. The, it's a, the, the letter addresses the budget situation in Albany and business leaders and the importance of budgetary support for the university. This is the first time that such a distinguished group of alumni and business leaders have come together to communicate with key decision-makers in a unified manner in support of CUNY. They are the women and, and men who help raise private funds that enhance our services and programs and as well as for student scholarships. I understand that there will be additional messages in other media during the course of, of this entire week, and on behalf of the Board, I want to say that we are deeply grateful for this supportive work. As I said, the Ch- The Chancellor will have more to report on the state budget situation later, a bit later in this meeting. It gives me great pleasure to report that College of Staten Island Professor Daniel McCloskey, who is with us this afternoon, has been named by President Obama as a recipient of the Presidential Early Career Award for scientists and engineers. Dr. McCloskey is one of a hundred and five early-career scientists awarded with this highest national distinction. I would like to ask President William Fritz to introduce Dr. McCloskey prior to inviting him to say a few words. President Fritz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce Professor Dan McCloskey, who is an outstanding member of the College of Staten Island and the City University of New York faculty. As you said, President Barack Obama recently named CSI Associate Professor of Psychology, Dr. Daniel McCloskey, a recipient of the Presidential Early Career Award for scientists and engineers, granting him the U.S. government's highest award for scientists and engineers in the early stages of their independent research careers. Professor McCloskey's research was nominated to the president by the National Science Foundation. Professor McCloskey is one of only a hundred and five researchers awarded this national distinction, of which four were from the state of New York. The, of the other three, two were from Cornell and one from NYU. Nationally, the others were mostly from top-tier, well-funded, national labs. Professor McCloskey's recognition by the National Science Foundation and by President Obama is a testament to the high-caliber research that our students are exposed to in his lab and indicative of the overall cutting-edge research being conducted at the College of Staten Island. For those who are unaware of the nature of his research, it is based on studies of the African naked mole rat, and with assistance of our interdisciplinary, high-performance computing center, Dan is able to track the behavior of over a hundred animals in a colony, which provides insights to the organized social community and how individual differences in social behavior are influenced by psychological and environmental factors and the role of social behavior, brain systems, and health. This in turn enables greater insight in diseases such as epilepsy and autism. Many of you have visited his lab on your visits to Staten Island, and everyone is enamored with the naked mole rats.[893.12][893.12](laughter) In two thousand and twelve, Dan was also awarded a five-year Faculty Early Career Development, or Career Grant from the National Science Foundation, one of approximately five hundred nationwide. To me, the really amazing thing about Dan is his involvement of undergraduate students in his scholarship. Every time I visit his lab, there are undergraduate students participating in all phases of the research. Many are co-authors of professional papers and presentations, which is giving them the edge when they apply to further their studies. Most presented our annual Conference on Undergraduate Research Scholarship and Performance, and this care for undergraduate students is not seen at many of the better, well-known national labs that the other recipients are from, and I think it's what sets our faculty at CUNY apart. That is, the highest level of scholarship while providing an incredible CUNY value to our students. Professor McCloskey.
Thank you, President Fritz. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to say a few words. I'll be brief, I promise. This week in Albany, policymakers are assessing the value of CUNY to our state, and recently, Chancellor Miliken spoke to those policymakers about the return on investment that continued and secure state funding of CUNY provides. As the first person in my extended family to graduate college and after receiving baccalaureate, masters, and PhD degrees from New York State-funded public colleges and universities, I agree fully with the Chancellor's remarks. My research at CUNY brings in federal grant dollars, which create new jobs and provide high-level training for students at all levels, including those from New York City public schools. The Presidential Early Career Award and the NSF Career Award associated with it are a reflection of the federal government's recognition that CUNY and my own campus, the College of Staten Island, can provide both access and excellence. But this can happen only through continued state support and a fair contract for the hard-working faculty. The investments made within CUNY, including allocation of state funding, are directly responsible for my current successes. During CUNY's, CUNY's decade of science funding, Vice Chancellor Small granted a request for state-of-the-art neurophysiology equipment to be shared by the faculty at CSI. Almost overnight, my grant proposals were considered more competitive because reviewers understood that CSI and CUNY were invested in supporting quality research. Vice Chancellor Small also initiated a grant-writing workshop in two thousand and eleven for faculty who were writing proposals for the NSF Career Award. This training allowed me to draft a clear plan for research, education, and outreach which was awarded by NSF and ultimately recognized by the White House. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Small. The investments made by CSI have been perhaps the most profound influence on my academic career thus far. Sure, there was some, also some institutional support from CSI to help buy some equipment, but more important was the time investment. In addition to collaborations with wonderful faculty, my interactions with the administration has been truly rewarding. CSI's Vice President for Institutional Technology, Dr. Michael Kress, has spent hundreds of early morning and weekend hours helping me to process and analyze my data. He has engaged in my research questions as I am, and I know I am not the only faculty member he works with in this way. Mike is the life's blood of our computational research conducted at the College of Staten Island, and he has done more for the success of CSI researchers like myself than most people realize. Recently, my president, Dr. William Fritz, spent two weeks, two weekends drafting an eleven-page scholarly discourse on the phylogeny and fossil records of my research subject, the African naked mole rat. Once again, I know I'm not the only faculty member at CSI who has worked with Bill in this way, but it was an unforgettable experience, sitting there in, in the president's office with him and President, Vice President Kress, just Mike, Bill, and Dan, putting aside any other discussion and geeking out about naked mole rats.[1136.83][1136.83](laughter) This type of commitment from my administration is what my colleagues at the major research institutions admire the most. It shows a high-level institutional support for motivated junior faculty and has encouraged me to embark in new directions with a feeling of security. It is my hope that these accomplishments are only the beginning of the return on investment that I aspire to provide, and that the junior faculty joining CUNY today receive the same support and encouragement that has been so beneficial to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor McCloskey.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I'm not an expert in African naked mole rats, but I did take a group of undergraduate scientists to Albany in February to show to the legislature just how proficient our undergraduate students are, and one of those more impressive students was from the College of Staten Island and spent as much time as I could stand there and listen, explaining to me about the gradations of the tunnels that they have at the African, so that the groups don't mix up together. It was a quite impressive performance, well above my understanding of what the issues were, but I, I can tell you that the legislators that came, legislators that came down and, and saw this show, saw an enthusiastic young scientist, ready to add value to New York State and to the nation, and it's exactly why these young men and women need to be supported. Thank you.
Our thanks to you, Trustee Martel, and the University Faculty Senate for organizing the CUNY-SUNY University Faculty Senate Poster Day event in Albany on February twelfth. This year, it was the undergraduate students at all the collective schools who had the opportunity to display their work. There was an impressive, an inspiring display at the Legislative Office Building, which attracted a great deal of interest. This past weekend, the Somos El Futuro hosted its twenty-ninth Annual Legislative Conference in Albany. Trustees Una Clark, Rita DiMartino, Hugo Morales, and Joseph Owaji participated at the conference on Saturday, March eighteenth. CUNY hosted a luncheon that was attended by the trustees, legislators, several college presidents, administrators, students, and elected officials. Many speakers reaffirmed their support for CUNY, including Mayor Bill de Blasio, Speaker Carl Hasty, State Controller Tom DiNapoli, City Controller Scott Stringer, public advocate Letitia James, as well as several state senators and, and Assembly members. Chancellor Miliken presented former Secretary of State and, and CCNY graduate Caesar Peralis with the distinguished alumnus award. I also mentioned this event as there was a, a special recognition of the twentieth anniversary of the Model New York State Senate Session Project, which has provided college students from SUNY, from CUNY and SUNY with an opportunity to develop and enhance their leadership potential through experiential education. Forty-three CUNY students and eighteen SUNY students participated in a lively debate on paid family leave Saturday afternoon. Our senior Vice Chancellor and Board Secretary Jay Hirschenson was honored during the conference's gala Saturday evening with the Champion for Latinos Award by the New York Senate Assembly and Senate Puerto Rican Hispanic Task Force. The Board held its annual Brooklyn Borough Hearing on Tuesday, February sixteenth. Trustee Valerie Beal chaired the hearing that was also attended by trustees Una Clark, Brian Oberfeld, and University Senate Chair and Trustee Joseph Owaji. Members of the Chancellery and the Brooklyn College Presidents and their representative, or their representatives also attended. The Board held its annual Staten Island Borough Hearing on Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Trustee Rita DiMartino chaired the hearing that was also attended by trustee Jill O'Donnell Torme and University Student Senate Chair Trustee Joseph Owaji. Members of the Chancellery, College of Staten Island, President William Fritz were also present. A summary of both proceedings has been distributed to, circulated to all the trustees and the chancellor's cabinet, and transcripts are available in, in the office of the secretary. On behalf of the Board, I would like to extend our deepest condolences to the family of Alan Margolis, who passed away recently after a long battle with cancer. For many years, Alan was the Senior Registrar at Queens College, and he then transitioned his knowledge and great experience to assist our central administration on many key projects such as CUNY first. Alan will truly be missed. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Baruch College distinguished professor of English, Grace Schulman, was chosen to receive the two thousand and sixteen Poetry Society of America Frost Medal for Distinguished Achievement in American Poetry. An award ceremony is to be held in April at the National Arts Club in Manhattan. Congratulations. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Carol Robles-Ramon to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three CUNY colleges were among a recently released list of the fifteen most affordable bachelor's degrees in physics by affordableschools.net. Listed alphabetically, they are Lehman College, Queens College, and York College. Congratulations. Baruch College Masters in Financial Engineering, MFE student Song Wang, just won the Solve-A-Thon at MIT trading competition organized by WorldQuant, receiving a ten-thousand-dollar cash prize. Additionally, an MFE team recently won three of six events, commodities trading, credit risk, and sales and trading, at the two thousand and sixteen Rotman International Trading Competition. The team, who came in second in equity valuation and third in algorithm trading, consisted of six students who were ably prepared by two professors and several alumni of the MFE program. Congratulations. One current and one former Ostos Community College students, Jose DeChamps and Javier Ahao, were recently honored with USA Today Phi Theta Kappa All-New York Academic Awards. Congratulations. And last but not least, LaGuardia Community College student Daria Sowa was selected from among nineteen hundred students as a Coca-Cola Community College Academic Team Gold Scholar based on her scores in the All-USA Community College Academic Team Competition. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have on the table a list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to our January twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen meetings. That list is also in your trustee meeting book. May I now call on Chancellor James B. Miliken to present his report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will present my report only because I don't have a copy of President Fritz's eleven-page paper on Professor McCloskey's research.[1683.21][1683.21](laughter) Maybe I can present that at the next meeting. For more than one hundred and sixty years, CUNY has been a gateway to progress and fulfillment for the millions of New Yorkers who did not begin life with great advantages, particularly those from low-income families, underrepresented groups, and immigrants. The university has a remarkable record of providing high-quality, affordable education, and the returns to New York have been invaluable. The greatest prize is what these graduates have done for their communities and for our city and state's prosperity. CUNY graduates have been instrumental in making New York the cultural, financial, and business capital of the world, and generations of New Yorkers have joined the middle class because of CUNY. With the support and guidance of this Board, we're committed to ensuring that the university and our graduates continue to play these leading roles as New York prepares for the challenges of the future. However, as Chairman Schmidt reported, CUNY's role in continued achievements face, surprisingly, enormous risk today. This year's budget process involves unusual and extraordinary threats to CUNY. Begins with the proposed shift of almost five-hundred-million dollars from the state to the city, which the city has adamantly rejected. It's been said that there will be no additional cost to the city and that CUNY will not be cut, but it's not clear today how this will be resolved. For CUNY to continue to serve the city and state, and especially, serve the more than five-hundred-thousand students who are enrolled today, several things must happen. First, there must be a resolution to the long-out-of-date labor contracts. This requires funding in the budget. We're not asking for anything new or unusual, just that the state's pattern, which is the one that SUNY faculty and staff benefited from, be extended to CUNY. benefited from, be extended to CUNY. Each budget, the executive, the senate, and the assembly, includes funding for CUNY's labor contracts, though the number used, 240 million, is the investment we sought last year to make up for a 4% increase in 2010 moving forward. A year later, the number's higher, of course, but the point is that there's no disagreement among the three parties to the state budget negotiations that an investment in CUNY's contract is necessary and should be a part of the final budget. Second, there must be no cut to CUNY's budget. The governor has provided assurances that that won't happen, and we're grateful for that. In fact, as the chairman said, CUNY's budget is underfunded and requires new investment. So as part of this, there must be ongoing new investment in CUNY, which is needed, in part, to fund our faculty and staff salary increases going forward. This requires either a tuition plan or funding in lieu of tuition. This board supported a continuation of the predictable tuition policy, which was in the executive budget. Both senate and assembly budgets reject tuition increases. The assembly budget includes funding for CUNY in lieu of tuition. The senate budget includes funding in lieu of tuition for SUNY, but not CUNY. Of course, we believe that SUNY and CUNY should be treated equitably, and that if tuition is frozen moving forward, funding should be provided for both systems. Without these three things happening, the important work that CUNY does will be seriously threatened. Now, as the chairman indicated, there's been much talk about administrative costs and efficiencies, and of course, CUNY should operate cost-effectively and focus its resources on academic programs and student support. And it has been doing that. A comparison of the costs of major university systems clearly demonstrates that CUNY is spending less on administrative overhead than most of its peers. Nonetheless, I agree that more can be done. Our cost-reduction process, working on together with the fiscal committee of this board, will help ensure that an efficient, productive CUNY continues to put its emphasis on faculty and on academic and student support. As the chairman mentioned, CUNY has been a leader in creating shared services among its campuses in numerous areas. As we continue to work with state leaders on the budget, we will not lose sight of the goal of continuing to provide the highest-quality, affordable education to those students who in so many instances prove that they do the most with it. What I want to make clear is that while the budget consumes a great deal of time and energy, the investments that the taxpayers have made in CUNY continue to provide enormous returns for our colleges and leaders as we create new programs and new opportunities for our students, all contributing to the atmosphere of excellence at CUNY. In that vein, the board will be voting today on an important new step for the university: the creation of a new named professorship at John J. College. With generous funding by the Ford Foundation and Atlantic Philanthropies, we will be establishing the Franklin A. Thomas Professorship in Policing Equity. Franklin Thomas, of course, was an influential trailblazer, rising from a poor childhood in Brooklyn to literally change the face of this city as the founding president of the Bedford-Stuyvesant Restoration Corporation, was the first African-American General Counsel of the NYPD, and he did remarkable work for 17 years as the president of the Ford Foundation. So stay tuned for exciting news about the first Franklin Thomas Chair, but for now, I offer my congratulations to President Travis and John J. College. A second piece of very good news this evening. Tonight, I am pleased to report on an exciting effort to increase significantly the number of women working in technology, an important objective that will benefit our students and especially the rapidly expanding tech industry in New York. CUNY is partnering with Cornell Tech, Verizon, and other leading companies on a new initiative called Women in Technology and Entrepreneurship. This initiative hosted at CUNY will be the first of many that will continue to demonstrate the wisdom of having appointed Anne Kirchner to lead us in strategic partnerships. Thank you, Anne. I want to recognize and thank Anne's partner and someone who's key to making this happen and will be key to making it successful, Judy Spitz, Verizon Executive in Residence at Cornell Tech, who is leading this program. So now to state the obvious, why is this important? Women make up more than half our students, but nationwide, less than 1% of women students graduate with degrees in technology-related fields. If that isn't startling enough, the percentage of computer science degrees awarded to women has actually declined by 19% in the last 30 years. So CUNY, with its partners, Cornell Tech, and corporate leaders in New York taking action to correct that with a new partnership that, among other things, will include summer programs in tech design for graduating high school seniors, scholarships to attend CUNY, new computer science classes, and internships for young women. Thanks to Anne and Judy and our partners at CUNY, at Cornell Tech, and Verizon and other companies, this will be a great addition to the programs that we offer to the city and state of New York. That's my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chancellor. I believe trustee Owaji has a statement he'd like to add.
Yes. Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, Chairman Schmidt, Chancellor Miliken, fellow trustees, members of the Chancellery, and to all the members of the CUNY community that have joined us today. I'd like to make a statement regarding the ongoing budget negotiation in Albany. Firstly, I'd like to begin by thanking Chancellor Miliken for his steadfast leadership in advocating on behalf of CUNY during this turbulent time in Albany. The importance of the conversation we are having regarding CUNY's funding cannot be overstated, and whatever happens in the upcoming weeks will have lasting consequences. We are all lucky to have Chancellor Miliken as the lead voice for CUNY as our legislators have these discussions. On the state assembly side of the equation, I would like to thank the New York State Assembly Speaker Carl Hasty and the Committee on Higher Education Chair Deborah Gleck for their strong one-house budget that includes increased funding for CUNY, which adjusts the governor-proposed cost shift from the state to the city, which in essence, a cut of state aid, and freezes tuition at CUNY for two academic years. The University Student Senate leadership is strongly in support of Resolution Number 732-A, which calls for the governor and the state legislator to increase state funding to CUNY and to reach a fair labor agreement with the university faculty and staff. On the state senate side of the equation, the one-house budget bill also freezes tuition, but it accepts the governor-proposed cost to CUNY. This is, of course, disappointing. Our students have been very clear that tuition freeze and increase in funding are not mutually exclusive. Both can be realized in the same budget. I was encouraged by the comments Senator Jose Peralta and Senator Gustavo Rivera made at the CUNY luncheon during the Somos El Futuro Conference this past weekend. They are honor-credibly in their intention to preserve CUNY's funding. I would like to thank them for their support. Lastly, Governor Cuomo is the most important variable in this equation. Governor Cuomo's proposed tuition hikes and $485 million budget cut to CUNY are an attack on the American dream. If the governor and our legislators don't reverse the decline in CUNY funding and fund a contract for our professors and staff, the state will be abdicated its responsibility and threaten the essence of CUNY's mission: a promise of an affordable, accessible, and quality education for all New Yorkers. Our students support a fair and equitable contract for our faculty and staff. The budget should not be used as an instrument of division, putting students against faculty in the budget with more than enough for everyone. We are all part of this same CUNY community, and we'll continue to stand together to put pressure on our state representatives and the governor. We have marched side by side. We have collected petition signatures together, and we have faced the effect of austerity together. It is not too late for Governor Cuomo and the senate to turn the tide of austerity currently sweeping the nation and drowning students in debt and tuition hikes. Now is the time for investment to ensure a quality, affordable, high education. We need all the hands on deck in supporting this effort. We will add that CUNY do deserve a minimum wage increase as well, not just our SUNY counterparts, and therefore, Governor Cuomo should take into consideration that CUNY do deserve that minimum wage increase, not just SUNY. And I repeat, not just SUNY, but CUNY do deserve that as well. Lastly, for the board's record, I've attacked the press release from the University Student Senate's March and March rally, and then March on Sunday, March 13th. We thank the City Council Black, Latino, and Asian Caucus, Chairwoman Inez Barron, Brooklyn Borough President Eric Adams, Manhattan Borough President Gabe Brewer, Assembly Members Diana Richardson, Michael Blake, Richard Godfrey, Rodney Bichard, Joanne Simon, and Charles Barron, President Barbara Bowen, and all the faculty and staff of CUNY who supported our rally and march with us, students across the Brooklyn Bridge, as we continue to call on the governor to increase state funding for CUNY. Thank you.
Are there other -- are there other comments or questions on the chancellor's report? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chancellor. We'll now turn to the policy items that require a vote. I'd like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for March 21st, 2016. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions on the chancellor's university report? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, university report is adopted. I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and the executive session of January 25th, 2016. You'll find a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any suggested revisions or concerns about the minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, the minutes are adopted. We'll now begin to hear from our trustee committees. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. I'd like to call on trustee Committee Chair Barry Schwartz.
Thank you, Chairman Schmidt. I think you invited this a few minutes ago, and I wasn't paying as careful attention as I should, but first, let me thank you for your very powerful opening statement. It is much appreciated at this time, and thank you very much for the work that you have done at CUNY in the past and certainly the work that you continue to do today. I'd also like to thank my most effective colleague to my left, Joseph Owaji, for your very, very important statement and for the very important work that you have done on behalf of CUNY and this board during this time. And finally, I'd like to commend the chancellor and members of the chancellery particularly, particularly Senior Vice Chancellor Hirschenson and Vice Chancellor Sapienza for the very consistent, strong, forthright, transparent message they have delivered since these budget issues were focused upon us almost 45 days ago. Thank you very much. And on behalf of the Fiscal Affairs Committee, I can say, Chancellor, that we stand ready to work with you and the chancellery and any expert that may be engaged to help us examine our efficiencies and where we can realize costs to suggest those savings to our board. Thank you. I'll now turn to the business at hand, but if I may, there was a handout here at the desk dealing with this issue that you have talked about, the chancellor has talked about, Joseph and I have just talked about, which is efficiencies in our costs. And I wonder if Vice Chancellor Sapienza, before I begin the agenda items, might elucidate and elaborate on the materials you provided to us and help us better understand where we stand in the world of costs of our administration.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Schwartz, and good afternoon, everyone. As trustee Schwartz said, there are materials that have been provided to each of you regarding our administrative expenses and some of the good work that we've been doing regarding shared services and bringing our administrative expenses down as much as possible. The key item that I want to point out, though, regards the data that's been used publicly regarding CUNY's administrative overhead per student. There have been reports that have cited the National Center for Educational Statistics, which has used a number of a little over $4,600 per student for administrative overhead for CUNY. The NCES data comes from IPEDS, which is the Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System, something that's used throughout higher ed. And one of the main concerns with using IPEDS data for a comparative financial analysis is that IPEDS is self-reported by institutions, and so colleges and universities have -- are very flexible in how they categorize expenses using IPEDS and how they define expenses using that system. And so what we've included in your packets this evening is a different analysis, and an analysis that we feel is a much cleaner one, and that is using audited financial statements for CUNY and for some of the other large university systems. We think this is better because, one, they are audited by an outside independent organization. In our case, it's KPMG. And the other reason is that the definition for institutional support, which is the category in higher ed that's used to measure administrative costs, for financial statements that are reported by higher education institutions, there is a definition for institutional support that is provided by NUCBO, which is the National Association of College and University Business Officers. So there is a clear definition of what those costs are. And as you can see by the materials that we have provided for you tonight, using CUNY's financial statements for the past fiscal year, our costs, our administrative costs per student full-time equivalent is a little below $2,900 per student for the entire system, and if you look at just our four-year colleges, just the senior colleges, it's below $3,200 per student. So we feel that's a much better comparison. We feel that that is much cleaner data to use and much, much more reliable in that it is, all of that data that I've just reported for CUNY and for the other university systems that are part of the analysis in your packets are audited by outside independent organizations.
Are you referring to page eight?
Yes, page eight of the --
Could you please refer to the pages that you --
Yes, I'm -- thank you, trustee. Referring to page eight of the PowerPoint presentation that was provided for you titled Administrative Expenses and Shared Services. Thank you.
And the very good bar graph on page nine, too.
And page nine of the same, of the same presentation shows that data on slide eight in a bar graph.
Is it possible for the record that you mentioned the colleges and then that we read it into the record?
Sure.
When it's listed?
Sure. We have, we have listed some of the large university systems throughout the country. We have comparisons to SUNY, University of California, University of Texas. Their numbers are using their audited financial statements in terms of --
Page nine?
Excuse me? Page nine.
In terms of reading them into the record?
Sure, sure, trustee Barry.
More specific, please?
No, absolutely.
For the record.
Sure. The institutional support per FTE using the audited financial statements for SUNY was 4,717. For the University of California was 5,938. For the University of Texas system was 8,116. For Rutgers, the State University at New Jersey, it was 4,198. The University of Massachusetts was 3,493. And just to read the others that we used that came in lower than CUNY and the other ones that I just read, the university system at Wisconsin, 1,723. State University system of Florida was 2,123, and the Cal State system was 1,858. And again, just to, I know I gave some rounded numbers for CUNY, so I'll give those specific numbers. The CUNY system was $2,864 per student, and also on your chart on page nine, we broke out what the CUNY senior colleges' number was, and that was $3,000. was, and that was 3,158.
Thank you. My insistence on reading it into the record is for those who will get the audio and the video, they don't have the benefit of having this document in front of them, and this way they'll be able to understand the specifics. Thank you very much for your great work in this area.
Thank you, trustee Gervis.
I'll now turn to the calendar. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs, and this is calendar item number three on tonight's agenda. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs, the Subcommittee on Investments, and the Subcommittee on Audit met in a joint session on February 1st, 2016. After approval of our minutes of the November 2nd Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting, we addressed the policy items on our agenda tonight and approved the following resolutions. This is calendar item number 3A. It's a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the Borough of Manhattan Community College to purchase custodial services for its leased spaces at 70 Murray Street and 5030 Broadway. That purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $7 million over five years. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3A.
Thank you. I'll second that. Are there questions for the Committee on 3A?
I have one comment, which is—
Yes.
—I recently visited the Borough of Manhattan Community College and spent time walking around its wonderful facility. And I will tell you that the great pride that the students and the administration and faculty take in it justifies this contract in my mind.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Item 3A is adopted.
The calendar item 3B is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees adopt an academic excellence fee of $800 per semester for the Master of Science Physician Assistant Programs at the CUNY School of Medicine and York College, effective for the fall 2016 semester. These excellence fees will be retained by the CUNY School of Medicine and York College, respectively, to fund direct costs of the degree programs. All other tuition and fee rates will follow those previously established by this Board of Trustees. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3B.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the Committee on item 3B?
I offer one comment, which is, our committee has asked for a report each year of all of the excellence fees that have been established, and we will look forward to getting that beginning next fall.
All right. Thank you. Comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That item is adopted.
Calendar item number 3C is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College to purchase and install two new cooling towers in the E Building. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $800,000. The college may purchase the towers and the installation services from one or more vendors and will replace the existing cooling towers with new, energy-efficient, and environmentally-friendly units. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3C.
I'll second that. Are there questions about the cooling towers? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That item is adopted.
Calendar item 3D is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of Medgar Everest College to purchase bus services to transport its students, staff, and faculty to and from the Franklin Avenue subway stop at Eastern Parkway to various campus locations. That purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $800,000. The contract shall have a five-year term with the right of the university to terminate the contract at any time. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3D.
I'll second that. Are there questions about the Medgar Everest bus service?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. We had at our meeting the chief operating officer, Jerry Postman, who advised our committee that when President Cruz took office at Medgar Everest, he did poll his students as to things that would matter in their day-by-day. This was item number one for them, and we were happy to recommend its approval to the board.
Happy to second that. Are there questions about the Medgar Everest? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That item is adopted.
Calendar item 3E is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees authorize the General Counsel to renew four existing contracts on behalf of John Jay College of Criminal Justice to provide services for the New York City Justice Corp. These contracts were initially authorized by the Board in 2012 and then later again in 2014. John Jay College will use these services for the continued operation of the Justice Corp., targeted in targeted New York City communities with high rates of poverty and young adult involvement in the criminal justice system. The additional renewal term authorized hereby shall be one year, and the purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $2,602,000 during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017, and will be using funds appropriated by the City of New York. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3E.
I'm happy to second that. Are there questions about the Justice Corp? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That item is adopted.
One other item for the Board to note is that, at the very good suggestion of trustee Beal, our committee has asked Vice Chancellor Sapienza and his staff to provide us annually an update with a metric and a performance evaluation of all of the various items we have been asked to and have approved over the last year.
Thank you very much.
With no more items on the agenda for the Fiscal Affairs Committee, the meeting was adjourned, and the Subcommittee on Investments was convened. After approval of those minutes of April 6, 2015, the Subcommittee went into executive session. And with no more items on the agenda, the Subcommittee on Investments was adjourned, and the Subcommittee on Audit was convened by its chair, our former trustee and colleague, Peter Pantaleo. After approval of the minutes of November 2, 2015, and after a presentation by KPMG of the A133 draft audit report, the Subcommittee approved a resolution approving that report. This was followed by a presentation by KPMG on the fiscal year 2015 management letter with CUNY's responses. I'd like to, if I may, acknowledge the extraordinary service and extraordinary good counsel that trustee Peter Pantaleo provided to us, the Board, and to our committee, and we will miss him. And I'm delighted to tell you all that trustee Valerie Beal has agreed to assume his role as Chair of the Audit Subcommittee. With no other items on the agenda for that meeting, we adjourned it, and, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. May I call on committee chair Wellington Chen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its February 1st, 2016 meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar item number 4A, Lehman College. Doctor of Nursing Practice. The proposed program will prepare individuals to provide evidence-based, cost-effective, high-quality primary care for persons from a wide range of cultural backgrounds translating research into clinical practice. The college is confident in its own alumni and graduates of other master's programs in the area will be natural fetus for the Lehman DMP. A master plan amendment is required because this is Lehman College's first program at the doctoral level. Calendar number 4B, Hunter College, Master of Science in Geoinformatics. Geoinformatics is the field of study that lies where geographic information science and computer science intersect. There's a growing employment demand for in-profit, nonprofit, and government organizations for individuals with strong geospatial, technical, and analytical skills. This program will meet the demand by focusing on computational methods by spatial-temporal analysis and big data analytics. Calendar number item 4C, School of Professional Studies, MA in Youth Studies. There are many employment opportunities that do not require teacher certification or other forms of licensing, both within and outside of the school system, that involve working either directly with the young people or at the policymaking level. Undergraduate programs, particularly at Brooklyn and York, will serve as a feeder program to this program, which is the first of its kind in New York City. Calendar number 4D, City College MS in Computer Engineering. The success of the undergrad degree program in computer engineering and the desire of its graduates to continue their studies at City College are serious motivators for the growth of school of engineering faculty to launch a compatible MS program. In addition, there's a great demand in the tri-state area in fields such as telecommunications, computing devices, cloud computing, and medicine for experts in combined application of hardware and software. Calendar number item 4E, School of Professional Studies. MS degrees in nursing education, nursing informatics, organizational leadership; BS, MS degrees in nursing education, nursing informatics, and organizational leadership; advanced certificates in nursing education, nursing informatics, and organizational leadership. Collectively, these online programs address a wide variety of issues within the nursing profession. The programs in nursing education address the issue of shortage of individuals qualified to teach nursing at the post-secondary level and in hospitals and agencies. The programs in nursing informatics will help fill the need for nurses qualified to fill leadership roles, the management and implementation of healthcare information systems. The nursing organization leadership programs will prepare nurses to work in and lead teams of healthcare professionals, provide integrated services to patients. Calendar number item 4E, Baruch College, DPS in Executive Business Doctoral. Capitalizing on over 40 years of providing graduate education in both the master and doctoral levels, Baruch College now seeks to provide doctoral-level education to seasoned executives looking to acquire the theories and skill sets needed to examine complex organizational issues and problems using applied research methods. The program will be delivered in an executive format using cohort model, and the college has a sufficient number of faculty members with a broad expertise to deliver the program. Calendar number item 4G, John Jay College, BS in Toxicology. As part of ambitious strategic plan, the college is expanding its offerings in the sciences. The proposed BS in Toxicology will provide students with a strong foundation in general sciences and advanced courses in toxicology from the sciences, forensics, and public health perspectives. Graduates of the program will be prepared for both entry-level positions in toxicology and public health, as well as for graduate study in the field. Calendar number item 4H, John Jay College, MA in Economics. The Master of Arts Degree in Economics at John Jay College will be an applied graduate program, providing students with comprehensive and foundational knowledge required for either the workplace or pursuit of higher degrees. The program will have a curriculum focused on economic justice and provide students with a firm grasp of theories, skills, and tools used by practitioners to apply these to economic analysis. Calendar number 4I, City College Resolution to Award Honorary Degrees. City College seek to award honor degree to Dr. Robert E. Kahn, class of 1960, Engineer and Computer Scientist, and Dr. Harold A. Strangerega, class of 41, Macro-Molecular Physical Chemist, at their 2016 commencement ceremony. Calendar item number 4J, CUNY Central Office, Resolution to Make Hunter the Sole Grantor of MS in Nutrition. In addition to the items presented at CAPRA, I seek approval for an item distributed to you today. This resolution will make Hunter College the sole grantor of a Master of Science in Nutrition Degree Program. As part of its reorganization of CUNY's public health offerings in acknowledgement of the history of the program and the existing faculty resources at Hunter, the chancellor recommends that the MS in Nutrition be maintained at Hunter, as with other changes related to public health. This structure is recommended because it will best meet the requirements of the program's accrediting body and therefore will best serve the students. Mr. Chairman, items 4A through 4I were approved by the committee. I recommend their approval, in addition to the items 4J by the Board.
Mr. Chairman, may I say?
Please.
I strongly support the NEST program at Lehman College. Taking in consideration that the number of physicians are decreasing every single year in this country, and in the next 10 years, it will be thousands and thousands of vacant that will not be filled by physicians, but it will be by nursing. It is extremely important that we give all of this support to this program because it's needed. For instance, in the Bronx, we only have one or two Spanish-speaking psychiatry. Taking in consideration the thousands and thousands of patients that have been treated, and there's none. So, I mean, this is a very serious situation, and I do believe that nursing will be the main strong faculty that will be taking care of our patients in the near future.
Thank you. 10 items have been moved by the committee. I'd like to second them. Questions for the committee?
Just a suggestion for the future. Since we've been asked to approve honorary degrees, could we learn a little bit more about the intended recipients, other than their names and what their degree is to receive?
Sure. I'll ask the committee to develop that information in the future.
Thank you.
Well, usually it was sent out to a senator.
There's usually a little bit of a description in our board book, but it's not part of the resolution. Are there any other questions for the committee or comments? If not, all in favor of these 10 items, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items are all adopted.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, trustee Chen. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. I'd like to call on trust committee chair Valerie Beal.
I'm sorry, Valerie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will now present for the Board's approval the matters that the Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at our meeting on February 1st. Items 5A through 5D are naming opportunities at several colleges, which I will present as a group. I would like to note that collectively, these namings reflect well more than $2.5 million in monetary gifts to the university. They are the Joel J. and Lillian Cohen Conference Room at Baruch College, the Art and Rita Siegel Piano Lab at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, the Richmond County Savings Foundation Atrium at the College of Staten Island, and the Khan Edison Lecture Hall at Queens College. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters and is pleased to recommend their approval. Mr. Chair, I present items 5A through 5B, 5C, and 5D for the Board's consideration.
Happy to second those items. Are there questions on any of these naming issues? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items are adopted.
Thank you. Item 5E proposes the adoption of a governance plan for the new CUNY School of Medicine. On September 17th, 2015, the Board of Regents authorized the City College of New York to offer a medical doctor degree in medicine. Building on the 40-year success at Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education, this resolution establishes a governance plan for the new School of Medicine, whose mission is to produce highly skilled medical practitioners to provide quality health services to communities historically underserved by primary care physicians. The proposed governance plan includes— The proposed governance plan incorporates elements of the Sophie Davis bylaws, adopting them to the requirements for offering a full-fledged medical school. Mr. Chair, I present items 5E for the Board's consideration.
Happy to second that. Are there any questions about the governance plan? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That is adopted.
Thank you. Item 5F amends the governance plan of the Graduate School and University Center to facilitate the transition of all graduate programs in public health to the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, as authorized by the Board on November 23rd, 2015. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed this matter and recommends its approval. Mr. Chair, I present item 5F for the Board's consideration.
Happy to second that. Are there questions about the governance plan? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That is adopted.
Mr. Chair, we have an additional item that arrived too late for our review on February 1st, but was of sufficient importance to bring to the Board this evening. Item 5G concerns a joint $1.5 million gift from the Ford Foundation and a $1 million gift from the Atlantic Philanthropies to fund the Franklin A. Thomas Professor in Policing Equity in John Jay's College of Criminal Justice. The professorship is named for the first African-American General Counsel of the New York City Police Department, who was also a former president of the Ford Foundation. It will bring a preeminent scholar to the college to perform research on the subject of implicit bias and to advocate for reform of police training and policies on issues of race, gender, immigrant status, and other stereotypes. Mr. Chair, I am pleased to present item 5G for the Board's consideration.
I'm very happy to second that, that motion. Let me make a comment about this. It was my father who recruited Frank Thomas to leave the police department and become the first leader of the Bedford-Stuyvesant Association. My father was chairing that at the time. And Frank and his wife and the kids became very, very close friends with all of our family. And I've watched with great interest his tremendously successful career, which started on the basketball courts at Columbia, where he was a star. So, I know Frank extremely well, and I can't think of anyone whose name is so associated with, with justice, criminal law, community rehabilitation, and community improvement. So, I'm very happy to, to second this motion. Very, very important person in our-
Mr. Chairman, may I say amen to that, since I know him so well?
Thank you trustee Clark. Are you ready for the question?
Question.
Judah?
We gave him the money.
I remember that.
The Johnson Presidency and the Senate, in the hands of Robert Kennedy-
Right.
Created Frank.
Yep, yep. I, I remember that all extremely well. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Unanimously carries. Congratulations. Now, I would like to present an, an action item regarding the establishment of the Women in Technology and Entrepreneurship in New York program. The Chancellor referred to it in his report. The item appears on page 16 of your meeting books. May I have a second, please?
Second.
The tech job market continues to boom, but computer science degrees awarded to women has declined by 19% over the past 30 years. This worthy initiative aims to increase the number of women working in technology. It will enable women students at CUNY with a singular opportunity to access innovative new computer science curricula to be offered across the university, as well as internships and community programs, to support them in the tech industry. Chancellor Milliken, would you like to make a comment on this? You, you mentioned it in your report.
Right, no, I think I've adequately, sufficiently commented on this, Mr. Chairman. You made the additional strong case for why this is an important program, and I'm a huge advocate for it.
Good, I think it's gonna be a wonderful program as well. Are there any questions for the Chancellor? If not all in favor of this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That item is adopted. Calendar item number seven is, serves as notice of an action taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee on February 24th, 2016, of an action, of an item recommended by the Chancellor. The Committee unanimously determined it would be detrimental to delay the advancement of this matter. The item taken is listed on page 17 of your calendar books for your, this is a, a non-action item for informational purposes only. That concludes the public business of this meeting, and I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.